Meeting is called to order. Roll call.
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Are there any changes to our agenda tonight? If so, if not, I'll read the consent agenda, proposed consent agenda. By the way, our mayor is taking a well-deserved vacation, so I'm sitting in for her today, this evening. Consent agenda: approval of the minutes of the July 12, 2021 council meeting, approval of July 14, 2021 special payroll, $9,489.89 cents, approval of July 23, 21 payroll.
That's not the agenda. Is that the right projection?
Ah, thank you, thank you. Excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, I'm reading the wrong one. Try again. All right, August 9. Consent agenda: approval of the minutes of the July 26, 2021 council meeting, approval of August 6, 2021 payroll, $133,527.75, resolution authorizing fund transfers, approval of liquor license for Depot House, approval of liquor license for Flamingo Lanes, approval of total claims in the amount of $521,365.68, claims in excess of $75,000 are Align Energy of $85,134.36, and Maxwell Construction of $229,812.28. Take a motion to approve.
Quick question. Aaron, was that Align Energy, was that our final payment for the downtown lights? No?
I don't know what that bill was.
I think that's the only thing that we would owe them in an amount like that big.
I'd have to look into it.
Yeah. I'll find out when Melanie gets back.
I'll let you know. I'll just have to look at the claims and tell you what it was for.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
I forgot to add, if there's any, if there's no further discussion regarding the consent agenda, we'll proceed with the next step. I'm going to figure this out. All right. Next, our public forums and appearances. We have two speakers this evening, political signs. First is John Miller.
So, thank you for the chance. After I requested the chance to speak, I found out that you all have discussed this already, so this is a bit redundant, except to add some voices to the concern. Obviously, it's about the F-bomb Biden signs that have appeared in town a couple places, and I've seen the one north of Pence a couple blocks, which is unfortunate for the kids to have to, to have to see that, those that might be walking to school and so forth. I understand from talking with Mr. Morrissey that, and with Mr. Toohill, that this is being brought to court in New Jersey, I believe, and I guess we are waiting to see what happens to that case there, as to what action might possibly be taken here to try to bring down the signs at some future point, if possible. My understanding is, right now, there's nothing that we can do about that. So, if anybody has anything else to add, I think Doris has some information about the New Jersey case that I don't have. She might want to add some comments to it. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments or questions, Mr. Miller?
Well, there was an article in the League of Cities Cityscape magazine about this issue, and it said exactly what our city attorney said many meetings ago. Unless you interpret the F-word as an act of violence, or encouraging an act of violence, it is protected as free speech.
Any further comments or questions of Mr. Miller? Next, public forum appearance. Doris Slocum, Ms. Slocum?
Thanks for being here, and thanks for serving local government. I really appreciate that. I know it takes a lot of time, and not a lot of thanks. So, it's harder not to look hypocritical. I have used this word before, and I don't use it often, but I have used the word, so it doesn't look as though, you know, I'm a saint. The mayor did, from rumors that I hear, that the mayor did appeal to this guy, who now flies the flag, and he, or that homeowner, or those people, did not have any response to that, and they definitely did not want to take this sign down. I understand about the free speech aspect, and this litigation in New Jersey is a municipal, it's a, what do they call it? They call them boroughs, don't they? It's a borough ordinance that prohibits obscenities, and I don't understand that Fairfield, which is a nice town, wouldn't have such ordinance anymore than, why would New Jersey have it in that art town? That made me kind of curious about, the right to free speech has nothing to do with the F-word, or the N-word, or the C-word, or the D-word, and if anybody wants to know what those bad words are, they're all bad, and you really do not want to see them flying on anyone's lawn. So, he also, in this article, this article was attached to the request for me to speak. If anybody wants it, they can have it. It's a law, a huge wall, that this lady had put up with about 10 F-words with different suggestions for Biden to leave the world. So, the mayor said, "While we respect the views of our residents, there's no place for profanity by a school and schoolchildren." This flag is four blocks from Pence, it's a block and a half from community daycare, buses go by there every morning, and the kids look out those windows, and I discovered this flag in May, on a sunny Sunday morning, and I was so appalled that I wrote a note to the police department, thinking they would care about this flag, because I don't, I think you wrote that it's on the agenda as a political sign. This is not political, I'm not even talking about a name. All I'm talking about is the word, and the word is what I'm worried about. If they can put the F-word on a lawn, can they put an N-word on the lawn? I just don't understand how this can be allowed. And there's precedent that was set in 1971, a landmark case, which, of course, I'm not a lawyer, but it was a case, Cohen versus California. In that case, a man protesting Vietnam War was charged with a violation of breach of peace statute for wearing a jacket that said, "Fuck the draft, stop the war." So, this woman, who has this little wall in New Jersey, has been told by the courts that she will pay $250 a day until she takes it down. Of course, she's appealing that, and that's why we don't know the final resolution. The thing that bothers me the most is the word, and I'm a volunteer at Washington, and I work with the little kids, the kindergartners, teaching them their sounds and their letters. I know by Christmas, 50% or almost 60%, that group of those kindergartners could pronounce this word. All you have to do is say, "Do you know the word duck? Do you know how D sounds? Now, take away the D and put in the F-sound." Now, their next question is going to be, "What does that word mean?", and then I have to come up with an answer to that. That's how easily little children can pronounce this word if they see it flying on that flag. This is the thing that bothers me the most.
Excuse me, your mic died.
It died? So, my question to the counsel is, how do you create an ordinance? And if you can't create an ordinance, or if you're not interested in an ordinance, do you have any suggestions for ordinary, common, low-level citizens to do anything to make the town better? I don't want strangers seeing that sign, that flag, I don't want the new students at MIU seeing that flag, and I don't want the little kids on the bus seeing that flag. This is my only, I understand you've been over it. Do you have any idea? I understand those lawyers and everybody said you can't do anything. If New Jersey can do something, why can't Fairfield? That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Slocum. Any comments or questions by counsel?
I do.
Otherwise, we'll have our city attorney, so we'll speak to this issue.
Real quick, too, I agree with your sentiment completely. When you said that the one in New Jersey, that had 10 different ways to ask Biden to leave the world, is there...
Yeah. What did you say?
There's 10 different ways to ask, to have Biden leave the world. That might be a different situation, and that might be a threatening situation, which we could do something about.
Oh, but he also, she also had just that same sign.
But...
Okay.
But if it's included in that, if it's included in that, then we could, and I wish we could.
I wish we could.
But I'm sure John has something to add.
Any other counsel comments?
Do I sit down? Do I stand up?
You can sit down, and maybe you may be asked to speak again, if you like. But any other comments or questions by counsel? Counsel? All right.
She's got the same information that's accessible to us through the Municipal Attorneys Association, and what's going on in New Jersey is similar to what was happening in Iowa in 1971, as well as the draft example in Cohen. And Des Moines, Iowa, it wasn't involving the F-bomb, but kids in the Des Moines school system were wearing black armbands with a peace symbol on it, protesting the war, and the school board didn't think that was patriotic, so they told them they couldn't wear it under penalty of expulsion. And that got started at the lowest level in town as a misdemeanor. It wasn't actually a misdemeanor, it was a school board infraction, but it went through a series of cases in Iowa that went through the district court, the appeals court, and the Iowa Supreme Court, which all upheld the school board. Then it went to the U.S. Supreme Court, and it was reversed per curiam. That means everybody on the court said, "Now, we're reversing this completely." And the premise back then was that even though you don't like the particular protest, and you probably, the country was split as far as the war and patriotic sentiment, that it's a form of political expression, and that the First Amendment protects it even if it's an unpopular expression. That case referred back to cases like the Nazis carrying, or the neo-Nazis carrying banners in the city of Milwaukee. That was another case, that the city of Milwaukee tried to block that in the parades, and basically, the Supreme Court said, "No, they got a right to carry their banners, even if they're hateful, even if they symbolize something that you could never agree with." And unfortunately, in this situation, about every five to 10 years, there's something that is put into banner form that is hateful, and sometimes, the meaning of the word or the lyric is bad enough that, I mean, some person might interpret the F-bomb as advocating violent sexual criminality, but lots of other people review it, or consider it a form of slur, a slang denigration, or something like that. It's a remark that says they don't like the person, not necessarily that they want to criminally sexually assault the person. Came up in some cases, there used to be banners four years ago, "Hang Hillary." They didn't really intend to physically go out and lynch Hillary, but you saw them on the corners of fields around the state and the Midwest, and they were something that boards of supervisors were asked the same questions we're asked tonight. Can't you do something about saying something like that? And, you know, short of proving that a person is intending to have that outcome, and what they display in their expressed sign, can't. So, right now, the stage that it's in in New Jersey is, it's got a few places it will still land. Municipal Attorneys Association, when I checked with them last, they thought that it had already been overturned at a, what I would equate with similar to our district court level, at the local courthouse, overriding the municipal judge below it, but that doesn't stop it from going up to the appeals court or the Supreme Court. So, there's still a couple more challenges in New Jersey to see where they land, and then it's a question about whether somebody wants to take it the rest of the route to the U.S. Supreme Court and say it's a question that hasn't been answered before in precedents. The only thing is, that here in Iowa, and the reason I've talked with the counsel about it in the past, is we have an Iowa case that's a precedent that we feel we're bound by, and that's the Tinker case, which was the black armbands and the peace signs on it. And that basically told the school district and the local officials, they really can't stop kids or other people from expressing their particular view as far as the war, the peace belief, or the black armband, because it's symbolic expression. And this situation, I was talking with one of our council members earlier tonight about, if this was a flag flying in the front yard of the house straight east of Pence School's sign, and everybody in the school could look out the windows, and all those little kids could see that over there, I might be tempted to go over and, just on the emotion of the situation, say that this is clearly the most glaring example of something that is understood to be showing something that's offensive to a whole bunch of impressionable small children, and it's just wrong on its face. It's a public violation of, it's either disorderly conduct or a breach of the peace. We have ordinances here in our codebook already. I don't know if we would succeed in front of our lowest-level court, the magistrate, even on that, as far as that flag being over there. Part of the thing is, if we wrote an ordinance trying to restrict that, and we said, "Geography makes the difference," and in no event, within 100 feet of the windows of a school for elementary children, is it permitted to display this kind of expression. The problem with that probably would be that the court would say, "That person still has rights to express. Maybe it can't be right there in the front of the house where it's the most visible, but on their property, they can probably still fly that flag somewhere." So, in this situation, if they moved the flagpole to the back easternmost part of the lot across the street from Pence, they probably have a way to avoid the effect of our ordinance, even if our ordinance said that much. The trouble is that between protecting the minds of the small children and everybody else's opportunity to express themselves under the First Amendment, it usually gets, I guess I'm just going to call it flawed in favor of the expression, the person that is saying it is protected even to that extent. And that doesn't seem right to most of us, but the problem in most of these free speech cases is, you have a rather bizarre outcome from protecting the concept, even though you look at it, what actually happened, and most people shake their heads and say, "That shouldn't be that way." But are you going to repeal the First Amendment? I don't think so. As far as other cases that are somewhat like this, we've been to court before on behalf of the city back in the late 90s. We had a case that took our public access TV station in for having a two-hour live broadcast with a person interviewing other people that had read the Kinsey Report, excerpts in Time Magazine, and he asked people to call in and describe where in Fairfield people are having more and better sex. Was that for a nighttime show discussion here in Fairfield? It was a two-hour program, right after a two-hour program on Halloween night, where it was aimed at primetime grade-school kids, how to cut out pumpkins and things like that. So, it had a audience that you could be very sympathetic to, as far as parents being upset that this was going on. Our FPAC board took the man that ran the survey and the interviews over the air, off the air, suspended him for six months. They told him he'd come back if he did some things different, as far as prior scripting of what he intended to discuss live and so forth. He didn't want to do that.
Mr. Morrissey.
So, he took us to federal court.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Can we, we need to move on to other items.
All right. Sorry, I got carried away. Anyway, the thing is, we have considered ordinances, and we are continuing to try to follow the same stuff you're doing. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate hearing you.
It's an unfortunate situation. Thank you for coming. Next on to city council business, resolution, action items, and ordinances. First, action item, to set a public hearing on the matter of intent to file an application with USA Rural Development for financial assistance to develop Step 3 sewer conveyance improvements.
Motion to set public hearing on August 23 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on the matter of the annexation of Crow Creek Bridge Edition. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the public, on the matter? Appears there is.
I'm just moving closer to the mic, if you have any questions.
Anyone wishing to speak on the matter of the annexation of Crow Creek Bridge Edition? Public hearing is open. I will close the public hearing. Next, we have a resolution, consideration of annexation of Crow Creek Bridge Edition.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? City clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution, consideration of resolution appointing UMB Bank, N.A., of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion or comment?
What does all that mean, Aaron?
Basically, what that means is, we're going to utilize UMB Bank to help us make our payments. We had an issue with one of our bonds this last year, where we didn't have an agent helping us with the payment. They took too much money, and then we had to prove to them that they took too much money, and it took a lot of our time in the office to get some of those things figured out. So, when we're getting to a larger bond, it makes sense to have an agent that handles these things on a more consistent basis, to help us with those things, so that we're ensuring that we're paying the right amount, they're not overcharging us, or undercharging us, and we're just making sure it's all correct. And that's, that's the reason for requesting this and going with UMB Bank on that.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Motion been made and seconded.
Yeah.
Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution, consideration of resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement, and authorizing and providing for the issuance of $3 million general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2021, and levying a tax to pay said notes, approval of tax exemption certificate.
The street, basically, street work?
Yeah, the $1.6 million of it is for street work, the other 1.4 is paying off recent bonds that we've had. To note that we saved 1% on one of the bonds, so we went from 2 and 1/4 down to 1 and 1/4, I think. It's a full percent on one of the bonds, and then the other bond is actually a savings of 2%. We went from 3-something down to 1-something. So, both of those bonds, and we're saving the city quite a bit of money on the interest of, which is the reason for refinancing those.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any further comment or discussion? Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Next, mayor's report. Mayor isn't here, I'm mayor pro tem, so I have a small report. Library board appointment. The mayor has, I've had some discussion with the mayor regarding the proposed library appointment, of a Mr. Sam Garchik. He's got an impressive resume and a reason why he wants to serve on the library board. He's got a BA in art history, an MA in history, secondary education teaching certificate, and a Master of Library Science. In addition, he's been a school librarian for 15 years, and he has some ideas of how he might want to be of service to this board and to this community. I think he'd be a worthy successor to the library board commissioner, who, a member of the library board who recently left, so, but I will entertain a motion to that, to accept Mr. Garchik.
So moved.
Second.
As a member of the commission. Wonderful. Motion by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any further comment or discussion? Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a city attorney report.
I'm going to have a couple things to talk to the council about, a closed session, but public health here locally sent around a couple flyers into the week and today about what's going on with COVID growth again, and probably, I just expect when the mayor gets back, we'll be having a conversation about whether the lift of the requirements as far as social distancing and masking in city buildings should be looked at again, and I guess it's sort of a optimism versus pessimism question at this point. Maybe things will be better, maybe things will be worse, but probably, you all ought to be thinking about that and watch what public health locally is doing also, because I've already had some local businesses and so forth ask if they should be putting signs back in their windows and doing lockdown, and I'm one of them also. I think probably masks and social distancing are going to happen for at least a couple months, until something else gets resolved, as far as what CDC is saying and not saying. So, food for thought, we'll see what the mayor thinks about it when she gets back.
It's an important point, John. We have asked that the public nurse, Kristi Essel, speak at council at the next meeting, August 23, and I do believe she's available. So, we'll have her to speak about local, state, and federal requirements and suggestions. We'll have that discussed in the next meeting. Next, we have committee and board reports. We'll start with the Economic Development Committee.
We met tonight before council on one agenda item, which is proposed mobile food unit permit, and then also, some proposed changes to the peddler license, and the committee just discussed various points of each, no decision as of yet, but some additional information was requested, so we'll meet again and see if we can agree on some language. Essentially, this is, the changes to the peddler license were simply, I'd say, updating the language, which office here at the city deals with those, and so that's something that anybody wanting to sell kind of in a mobile fashion around the city would need that license, and then the food unit permit is only for mobile food units who want to sell on public property. So, if you're selling on private property, no problem, don't need this. So, if you're selling on private property, no problem, don't need this. So, if you're selling actually in parks, you go to the park department. But we're kind of clarifying how exactly they would handle some requests. So, we'll come back with something at a future date.
Thank you, Michael. Next is the Ways and Means Committee report. We met this evening, and present were all members of the Ways and Means Committee, myself, Katie Anderson, and Doug Flornoy. Also present were the city administrator, Aaron Koiker, and the city clerk, Rebecca Loper. We, I had also speakers from the Sierra Club, Ann Walton and Mark Dwyer, speak to us about a request by the Sierra Club that we co-sponsor a forum they're going to have, a sustainability forum. I believe it's on September 10th. They're going to be having this forum in Sondheim Center. They're going to have, I believe, four speakers, sustainability coordinators from different cities in Iowa. The mayor's going, our mayor is going to be giving the opening remarks. And our position, our belief, and our decision, at least our recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee, is that sponsoring or co-sponsoring this, they're asking for $300 from us, co-sponsoring this forum is in line with our, one of our major themes of our Fairfield Forever Plan, which is sustainability. We would get recognition for the cosponsorship. Of course, we're invited. And it'll be, I believe it's from 10 o'clock to 12:30 on that Friday, September 10th at Sondheim. So, it's a recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee unanimously that the city do contribute and co-sponsor to the tune of $300. Are there any questions or comments?
Was there a recommendation from city staff which fund that comes from?
Good question.
Typically, we give to events through local office sales tax, and I don't know if there's wiggle room in that fund.
Probably.
$300 worth, maybe?
Yeah.
Probably. Well, I won't make a motion that's specific, but that would be general recommendation. So, I'll move to approve the $300 expenditure to co-sponsor the sustainability event.
Motion to approve by Hallie, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion or comment? Rebecca, would you call a roll, please?
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have our administrator and department reports. Mr. Koiker, city administrator.
The only thing I have today for you as far as a report is, just a reminder that the Iowa League of Cities Conference is coming up on September 15th through the 17th. I know we have a number of folks already registered. I think Michael is, and Paul, and the mayor are registered. I have a few department heads that are coming with us also. But staff, if you're, or council, if you are interested, let me know. We'd be happy to get you registered and hopefully get you a hotel room somewhere close. I'm going to venture against the Marriott's already full, but there's other ones close too, so.
Yeah, I went to one two years ago. Last year, I think they have it, last year was virtual.
Last year was virtual, the year before was up in...
Council Bluff.
Dubuque.
Was it Dubuque?
It's actually three years ago that you and I went to Council Bluff.
Yeah, it's very worthwhile.
So, it's Wednesday through Friday?
Yes, it's Wednesday through Friday. It's actually the afternoon of Wednesday, all day Thursday, and Friday morning.
I've gone to several. You can get in pre-lead on Wednesday, and it's mostly Thursday.
Looking at the agenda, I've, there's a few things I've earmarked for Wednesday that I do want to be at, so, like I said, and Paul said, there are some very worthwhile classes to go to, so.
Yep, so, if you're interested in professional development and networking, and what's interesting is you, you see that we're not alone in our struggles.
No.
Almost everything, almost everything we deal with, other towns and I would deal with, and it's fun as well. It's fun to actually hang out with your friends. I remember one time going, and I was the only person from Fairfield, so I just ended up sitting with the Atama people.
Well, that, and it happened to turn out to be the year before I started here, and somebody was talking to me a little bit.
Yeah. Me and Aaron met each other, actually.
We met each other.
Yeah, that was fun. So, yeah, if you got the time, come on up, we'll have a party.
Yeah, and it's only in Corleville, it's not far.
Yeah, it's not far, so.
Any other department reports? Nope, all right. We now have, on the calendar, a closed session. Closed session is on the calendar pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5 subsection C.
Motion that we go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session by Anderson, second by...
Ham.
Ham? I was going to say Judy, I'm going to say Judy.
That's right.
Second by Ham. Any discussion or comment about that motion? No? If, is there someone to, yeah, Rebecca, if you call a roll, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We have, we are now, are soon to be in closed session.